It's Monday, March 9th. We're in the administration building, 12121 West North Avenue. And we'll begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection, please. Mrs. Galante, roll call, please.
Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Excused.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here, thank you. At this time, we will entertain public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone present would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. The members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised; however, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anybody who has a comment on something not on the agenda? Seeing... Thank you. Your name and address, please?
My name is Clint Grohowski. I'm an associate principal at Wauwatosa West High School. My address is a New Berlin residence. But I just wanted, it's not a concern or an issue, but thought I'd share with you since I'm here, that at the Tosi East/Waus basketball game on Saturday, both student bodies conducted themselves in a way that you guys would be really proud of. It was an exceptional high school sporting event, great atmosphere. Wrong team won, but other than that, it was a great time.
Thank you. I was going to ask who won, but I guess I don't need to.
One basket.
Oh.
Really?
Really?
Thank you very much for sharing that. Anyone else? Okay, then at this time, I would introduce Mr. Frank Clarko from West to introduce his team.
He took away my thunder. I actually called Dr. Erdl today and said I wanted to talk about that game for five minutes today. And not because of the game itself, but, you know, I can remember back when I was in fifth grade going to those east-west games, and that's what it felt like once again. You had fifth graders through eighth graders, all the TBL kids were there, and student bodies were going back and forth very appropriately, and everybody played hard, and even the parents were well-behaved. That was nice to see. But it just true, and the night before, we beat Pius, they beat private school in Wisconsin Lutheran, so it was just like, yay, Wauwatosa!
Yeah.
It was just a really, really neat venue, so...
Great.
And as I congratulated Mr. Hughes, he did tell me I had to buy him breakfast. We kind of go back and forth, but we did beat them in football, so we'll move on.
All right.
Tonight, we have Kathy Schultz and some of her students with her, and I asked her to come and talk to the School Board and talk a little bit about the culinary team that she has. We, we really at West, we're really happy that we have some classes that get students ready for their careers right away. And when you walk into Kathy's class, you can just feel it right away that it's business. They're not just coming in there to cook, and that's what everybody thinks sometimes when you, when you hear chef one or chef two. She puts them through some rigor, and she's going to talk a little bit about the things that the students had to do for this competition, which, when she was explaining to me, I was like, a good thing I have a business degree. And the other thing that I really like about what Kathy's doing, she has a chef from Jackson's Pub and Grill come over and help the students, talk to them about what it's like, once you, if you really do want to go into, you know, that industry, the, you know, the restaurant business. So I'm going to have Kathy come up here. She's a fabulous teacher, works hours beyond hours, so Kathy Schultz, come on in.
Thank you. Oh. Okay, sorry, I came on too much.
Okay, yeah, this is our culinary team, Isaiah, Michael, Jacob, and Brittany. I was going to have them, and I'll introduce themselves, but I just did. They have either taken chef one and chef two, or Brittany is going to take chef two next year, but they all have a desire to be a chef. So this is really a real-life experience for them to be in this culinary competition, and this is the first year in a long time that West has had a team, so I'm really happy that we can get there. It's just really stressful. But some of the things they've had to do, they've had to develop their menu, and their menu is all from scratch, nothing, you can't bring anything in that's pre-made, precut, not anything. And they have, when they come in, they bring it in, the coolers have to be labeled with the cooled stuff, the dry stuff, and the chefs check it, and they check the temperature to make sure it's not in the danger zone, which they've learned about in class, food safety. Then, once that, they pass that hurdle, then they go and they go up to the, it's at the Wisconsin Center, and it's tomorrow. So we should be ready to go. But it's, we, what they do is, it's called mise en place, and they have to set up their area, and they have two six-foot tables that they get to use in an L shape. There's no electricity, there's no microwaves, there's no running water. It's all, but with two butane burners, which are similar to what you see here. They do provide the butane burners, that's very nice of them. And then they have to prepare this five-star restaurant-quality food with two butane burners and nothing pre-made. So they set up their station, they get graded on that. Then they have something called, it's called knife skills, and that's another thing they learn in the classes. Between chef one and chef two, we practice knife skills. And they have 15 minutes to demonstrate. We picked out four knife skills that we are going to use in our recipes. We are actually going to use more, but we could only use four for the demonstrate, for the knife skills portion. And they don't know which one they're going to get, so all four of them have to know all four of them. And so they'll say, you're going to do the dice, you're going to do the chiffonnage, you're doing the brunoise, and what's the other one? Julien. And then they take the appropriate food that we said we were going to do that with, and they cut it. And then the chefs are standing there with clipboards looking over them while they're doing it, and then they will most likely measure them. They may not measure them. If they all look even and they're all above the right size, that will be okay. But sometimes they do get rulers out to measure them. And so once they pass that hurdle, then they have to cook. They have 60 minutes to make this two plates identical, and then one gets judged on the way it looks, and one gets judged on the way it tastes. And they have, they have professional chefs, and they have culinary instructors that come, and it's all, there's all the teams throughout Wisconsin that are competing. So right tomorrow, there's about 22 or 23 teams for culinary that are competing. So in that 60 minutes, what we're making is a creamy tomato basil soup with basil chiffonade on top, and then they're grating fresh Parmesan cheese and cutting a baguette, and then it's toasted, but in order to toast it, because we don't have electricity, I'm trusting Jacob, with a little torch, and he's going to torch it. And we do that in chef two anyway. When we make creme brulee, they have to practice with torching, so some of that they know. Then, that's our starter. Then we have our main dish is a pan-fried sea bass with a grapefruit salsa. That is, Michael. Then we have hand-breaded and fried asparagus fries with a smoked paprika, pap, I said it wrong, paprika, I always say that wrong, aioli sauce, which is, Isaiah. And then, and we have a wild rice with a homemade lemon butter sauce infused, which is Brittany. And then for dessert, we have fried plantains with a cinnamon crunch on top of it, and then a caramel, no, cardamom praline sauce, which is Brittany. And that's all done without, with two burners and no electricity, and nothing done in advance. So it's, it's a lot, but that's not the only, once that's done, that's great, except before this, they also had to write all their menus, and each one, so like, he's got his asparagus fries and his aioli sauce, both of those had to be on separate restaurant formats for recipes, and then they had, so each one of them has like two or three recipes, they had to do that. Then they had to cost it out. So if you had a jar of mayonnaise, and he uses a third of a cup, he has to figure out how much a third of a cup is, and then cost that out to three decimals, no, three numbers past the decimal mark, so not just like a normal, normal number. And then we add that up. Then, then their menu gets put on another sheet, and then their food cost, what we said it cost us, can't be more than 33% of the total cost, so... So then there's a lot of math involved, and this is all done, this is the part that nobody really likes to do because it's, it's not cooking. But it's also really, really important because that is exactly what chefs do. They don't just cook. They also need to know how to order the food, how to price the food, and how to get, make money on the food. And so, and not waste food, because we also, when they do their knife cuts, they have a usable waste and a composting place. They have to, so they have to know the difference between what can get used in stock and stuff like that, and what needs to get thrown out. So there's a lot more to it than just cooking, but the whole class, the chef one and chef two, is what we go over in there, in between those two years, we are going over all those things. And so this competition kind of pulls it together. And the Restaurant Association has written our curriculum. So they, the National Restaurant Association, they got together and said, this is what we want our chefs to know. So I'm going to stop talking, and they're going to make you crepes. So are there any questions? So it's, it's quite intense, and we're all packed. Yes?
You said it, it's sponsored by the National Restaurant Association?
That's who writes the curriculum. That's our Pro Start, is what our curriculum is called. And so between chef one and chef two, they actually, if they go on to culinary school, they learn the same, they will have had a lot of what they're covering in culinary school, they will be introduced, they will have been introduced to it in these classes.
And how many other students are in the culinary class?
I, at West, I have two sections of chef two, and I have, between the two semesters, I have four sections of chef one.
And how did these four individuals come to the competition?
They indicated they wanted to be chefs, and they're pretty good at what they do, and they need to be trainable. Like, they have to be able to correct themselves if they're wrong. So there's more kids now that want to do it, now that they've heard about them doing it, and I can only have four. I can have an alternate, but the alternate really can't do anything. They can stand there and tell them something's on fire, or something's boiling over, but they can't really touch anything. So, yeah, it's only four people. A couple of years ago, maybe more than a couple, I did bring a management team here when I was at the other school, and, and we did win state, and we went to nationals with management, and that's a whole nother side of the restaurant industry. But this is really, this is a lot.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, you guys. Make your grade.
That's so cool.
Little commentary, gentlemen.
Talk assertive.
We have some pre-made, and they're warming.
Are they talking to judges or anything while they're doing this, or...
Kathy, do you want to get the microphone, otherwise you won't be recorded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I... All right. They can, the judges can talk to them, and they will, they'll ask them questions, and they can talk to each other. They cannot talk to me, they cannot look at me, because it might be construed that I might be giving them hints. So, and you did get disqualified, and I do know a team that did get disqualified, and the coach, the teacher was not motioning to his team, he was motioning to somebody else, but they didn't know that, and so the team got disqualified. But, yeah. So they're pretty strict. But there's, there is like probably, there are probably four or five judges walking around with clipboards right in their faces almost, and there'll be bending, they get bothered a lot while they're cooking.
Flip the crepes.
Yeah.
Didn't flip it? It's always exciting. They did learn this. This is the first thing they do in chef foods two. They, they flip the crepes, and it's kind of a review lab from chef one, but this is one of the first things they do. That's why we're doing that tonight, and not our competition food, because that's already packed and put away.
Okay.
If, if they can, maybe, if you can talk to them while they're cooking, I would like to know, is there a specific ingredient that you like to work with best?
Steak. Probably garlic is probably my favorite.
Yeah. Is it?
And Brittany wants to be a pastry chef.
I was going to ask next, do you ever use garlic in a dessert?
Uh... No. They do use a lot of weird food in desserts.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised if somebody does. Did you, do you have a favorite ingredient?
Favorite ingredient would have to be eggs.
Oh, love that food. That might be the, my favorite food. Eggs.
In terms of, like, a meat, I'd say chicken, but in terms of spice, since I like spicy, um, cayenne.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, they snuck that in a few times, so now we put it in the recipe.
Which one of you is in charge of the seafood tomorrow?
Nice.
That's, that's hard, isn't it?
Now, I'm also interested where your passion for cooking came from.
Well, I love to cook. I always cook at home, so it kind of like just developed, it was something I was really good at.
That's awesome.
It's like, I think I'll be good as a chef.
I think you will be too.
Thank you.
Board members, feel free to ask as they're working here.
Okay, when I was, ever since I was three, my grandma had me in the kitchen, so it's just a love of mine, and she's really grown me as a chef, and so this is another way to show what I can do.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Smoking.
Yep.
Oh, my gosh. We get crepes or something?
Unfortunately.
Here. I have a, and I, I don't have school system, but I was...
No, I'm passing, please. No, thank you.
That's too bad, Mike Myers down here tonight.
How much time do you have?
What did you, I didn't care for it, so...
Thank you.
Nice.
I don't know if I agree with that.
Just asking, everything good?
Oh, one other thing, there's no way I could do this without my husband, who's sitting back there, who brings our food sometimes and shows up with boxes and bags of all kinds of things at all times of the day and night.
Is the plantain ripening?
I hate plantains now. They're really hard to, I'm hoping they're going to be ripe, because they take a long time to ripen. We were traveling all over the city the last two days looking for ripe plantains. Did you want, no. And so they're, they're ripening as we speak. I probably have 15 of them in various stages of ripening. And Kurt was driving around some in the dashboard of his car trying to keep them, like, in the sun.
Brittany?
Thank you.
What's mixed, the boys and girls? Mixed, a number of boys versus girls. Ice cream, male.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Lins.
No?
Yeah.
I love that question.
I like it. That's very good.
What did you ask him?
He was, he was asking...
Yeah.
I'm sure I will. This is so fun.
Mr. Bodden was asking about the girl, the boy mix, and he said, are you asking me about the ratio? Seriously.
It was great.
Thank you. Cooking with salmon, yeah.
Okay, I'm not going to get the full flavor of this one.
You can have half.
Yum. This is awesome.
Everybody come back. Little chicken.
So is anybody nervous about tomorrow? Are you excited?
Cheese.
You're very excited? Awesome.
Cut up the chicken, put it in a big salad.
Good, well, does it help to be here tonight and kind of have people annoying you and...
I'm patient. I love chop salads. Okay, I have one more thing to add. We are competing tomorrow against schools that also, some of them have this for a full year, first, their first level, a full year for their second level, and they have a third and a fourth level for a year. And we do what we do in two semesters. It would be nice to have a little more time, but just a little plug, just something to think about.
Okay.
How many times have you burned yourself in class?
Thank you very much.
Yeah? No, no, have you? That's impressive.
She didn't say how many, but it sounded like, I mean, a couple of full classes.
She said two sections.
Yeah. You can clarify, I just wondered. I was more interested in your selection.
Smile.
Oh, I think you're getting tweeted. Dr. Erdl likes to tweet.
Are you going to tweet that?
Yeah. Hold on, let me, that might be good.
Hi, Isaiah. I have a note here, you're making, what kind of a sauce? Is it for the asparagus?
Most paprika, aioli.
And is it for the asparagus?
Ready?
Yeah.
And what's the sauce for the bass?
What is the crepe and salsa going?
Oh, yeah, salsa, yeah. Nice.
Isaiah, a little more pronation on the wrist from slow motion, we'll get that.
Do you have to cut all of the salsa ingredients there? You can't, you can't bring that. Wow, that's a lot. Wow. Cool. This is awesome.
What's this?
Does anybody have any that they want?
So good. One to Tim. Tim's looking at them better.
I can't say it, it's a sane old lady, shouldn't. Is there a freezer in there? I'll put one out for later.
They're excellent.
Thank you.
We've got to be done, so are the burners off? Sorry, I don't, I didn't bring any more. I was told to do that as well. There's a couple there. All right, you're marked, so we'll cancel.
So can people come and watch you? Like, can your grandma come and watch?
Yes. It's going to be $45 to come. Yeah, walk up is $45. Pre-order, it's $30 for your tickets.
Are all of the competitors high school-age students?
All competitors against us aren't high school age.
Okay.
They have to have the Pro Start curriculum for the chef class.
Okay.
So anybody from Wisconsin, or any school that's from Wisconsin that has Pro Start can do the competition.
Now, I understand that MHTC has an outstanding culinary program, is that still true?
Oh, yeah, I've, I've learned more than I've learned in the restaurant that I'm in right now.
Awesome.
And then is there a dress code for tomorrow?
No.
And what is that?
Black slacks, black clothes, clothes, shoes. You have to wear white chef jackets and a white...
I don't want to get angry, but I have newbies. They're all cats.
What about head, what about head covering?
They have, that's happened.
So Mrs. Schultz, are you going to get us the pictures?
Pictures?
Yeah, that would be awesome.
I accidentally take videos sometime with my camera.
Yeah, I know, I do that.
But, yeah.
That would be great. Are you coming back? Are they coming back? Because, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good luck tomorrow. Yeah, we can't wait to hear. I have to have at least one more bite before I do this. That was so cool.
I know, that was really great.
Take one more bite, and I'll move on here.
Mrs. Randall? I'd like to suggest that we add dessert as a regular agenda item.
Agreed. Mr. Clarko, thank you. That was very nice. Okay, we will then move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for a separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Excuse me, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. We will then do recognitions. Start with Mrs. Muehlfeld, please.
Yes, thank you. East High School family and consumer ed teacher Barb Brunswick has been named the Wisconsin 2015 Pro Start Teacher of the Year for her leadership in teaching skills for careers in the restaurant industry. Pro Start, administered by the National Restaurant Association Education Foundation, is a two-year curriculum on the restaurant industry that involved hands-on culinary competitions throughout the country.
West High School students in Nick Hiding's Business and Personal Finance class earned national recognition in a recent competition by estimating today's current value of the objects in the song "The Twelve Days of Christmas." West scored second place overall in the PNC Christmas Price Index Challenge. This competition brought real-life relevance to the curriculum. Students learned how inflation affected objects' current prices, researched past data, and analyzed market trends. Second and third place-winning students included Ella Hagopian, Tina Hartley, Abby Keen, Haley Barda, Nathan, and Nathan Mowbray. Nick Hiding received a teaching award.
Ten West High School students. Emma Bitner, Sabrina Black, Adam Carlson, Samuel Frederick, Zainab Hassan, Charles Kep, Brendan Michael, Jacob Neig, Mark Salmon, and, someone help me with this.
Alexandra.
Oh, Alexandra Zalanka. Were named National Merit Scholarship Program finalist. Finalists scored in the top 1% in the state on the preliminary SAT/PSAT. Many university scholarships are available to National Merit students.
Thank you. I just would note that Mrs. Casey took Mr. Meyer's readings at the last moment, so...
Otherwise, they would have been more prepared.
Yes, so thank you for that. Board members, comments, please? Mrs. Muehlfeld?
I'd just say it's outstanding, and I, I would also like to recognize, we had a timely recognition for our wrestling team, and one of our young men who went, did win in the state competition, and this is the first year that we have been able to do that. I, I mean, it may come with a, with a more formal recognition at one of our next meetings, but I think it was timely, you know, that that just happened within the last week, so...
Cool, thank you.
Congratulations to that team. That's a combined wrestling team that we have in Wauwatosa. Outstanding.
Thank you. Other Board members on the recognitions?
I think we used to have these recognitions on the agendas before, and now we've brought them back, and I love it, I just feel very proud. And I, I am just happy for the students, and I, I feel proud to represent the district, so congratulations to all of them.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We then will move on to reports. Dr. Erdl, please.
Thank you. One of the, one of the ideas...
One of the items on the district development plan, one of the initiatives on the district development plan, and it's an ongoing initiative, is communication. And what I want to do is touch a little bit on some of the efforts we've undertaken this year. Some of them similar to in the past, some a little bit different and new. But it's an area that we're always looking to get better at. Sometimes you look at communication, and with technology, the way it changes. And with technology changes come parental expectation changes, come staff changes and expectations. And as a school district, as an organization, trying to adapt and make sure that we're aligning our communication with the needs of our constituents, our parents, and our community members. So we've been working, and Laura Wayne Scott is here tonight as well. And Laura works quite a bit on communication. It helps me out a lot with communication. But there's another new component, I think, a little different, too, that we're going to touch on tonight as well. But some of the areas, we look at internal and external communications. And in the district development plan, we talked about using the data from the school perception survey. And out of that really comes our Blackboard Connect and our communication through Blackboard Connect. We continue to try to send messages out. I know a lot of people wait for that cold day or snow day email or phone call to come through the Blackboard Connect. Fortunately, this year, so far, we haven't had the opportunity to use that, so that's been good. But that's been a pretty important system. Our parents have come to rely on that piece as well. Power School, I know we continue to use that, and we continue to get better every year on how well our teachers are updating the information and the communication back and forth to parents. Some parents never check Power School. Some parents get a daily email on grades and attendance and all those other areas in there. So I think it can be varied for what the parents really want out of Power School and trying to cater that. We've also... Our mobile app on our website, and our website is now actually one year old. So I don't know if technology standards, a one-year-old website is old, but it's one year mature. We are going to be moving to a new app that's going to be more user-friendly for the phone system and for iPads and different pads as well. The... Oh, the website... The one thing with the website, and we've spent a lot of time with the website, Laura, particular with updating and adding information. But I was even talking to Laura today about websites. And when people leave and their place of work or they're driving to go home, and there's not too many people that get really excited about going home so they can check the school district website. So I always try to keep that in mind as we work on communication, so we focus on other areas. That the website is that one main source that people can always go to, but we know that there's a lot of other ways to communicate. Our contact us, we continue to get information off the website. The parents are contacting us to try to have questions answered and communicate through that, that source of technology. We have our city meetings coming up. The... Two years ago, myself, Laura's at those meetings, the mayor and the city administrator, we meet in the different wards. And this year, I think there's five different meetings throughout the city of Wauwatosa. We talk about the school district, we talk about the city. Attendance varies at those meetings, but I think it's a real good opportunity to talk about a couple of things. The city itself, our school district and what we're doing. And I think the collaboration between the city and the school district, which at this point is really strong, and we continue to try to grow that. So those are some ways we try to communicate. We recently held an event with area realtors. We're going to start doing that on a repeat basis and try to attract more and more realtors to talk about our school district. We know that's one source. It kind of goes along with the statement I make about people moving to the Milwaukee area, that when they move here, we want them to move to Wauwatosa because of the school district and because of the city. But the part we control is we want people choosing Wauwatosa for our schools. And trying to communicate that piece to our external stakeholders is really important. Internally, we continue to try to communicate as best we can. I think there's... Communication is... The best form of communication is face-to-face communication. And we know that can't happen with a number of people in our district in all types of communication. But one thing that's changed significantly, and Katie Wilkes, who is the president of the WEA, the Wauwatosa Educators Education Association, is here this evening to talk a little bit as well about our ongoing efforts in what we're trying to do. The component, how we communicate to our teachers and our staff, that's about 1,000 people overall, but 580 teachers. That communication has changed, and we're still working through... It's a different type of relationship between the district and the WEA, as well as the other employee groups. And the reason I wanted Katie to come here, as well as some other representatives of the WEA, is because I've been really impressed with how they are looking at trying to reformulate that relationship with the school district. And it's really about the best interest of teachers. And we're not real sure where that's going, but we're just trying to take steps the best we can to grow that. Because I think it's really important that there's the form of communication. We're also... I have the superintendent advisory committee, which is a... I think there's teacher association members on that and some that aren't. But an obligation to communicate with everybody in the district. And those are two of the ways that we're trying to have some of that communication. So I'll ask Katie to come up and talk a little bit about what she's attempting to do and the association is trying to do and what we're doing together.
Hello. We meet with Dr. Erdl and Jack. John, you have joined us a couple of times also, or once, I think. We meet on a monthly basis, and we bring concerns from our staff. But also mainly, we talk about moving the district forward and how we can attract and retain the staff that we really want here in Wauwatosa. We have done many things this year, including we started a stress busters, a couple. I think it was right before Christmas we started that, where we offer classes for free for teachers in the buildings to attend. We have yoga, zumba, jazzercise. We have some healthy eating. Just kind of a way for staff members to see each other outside of the classroom and be able to communicate. And we've also talked about things leading in for next school year to make sure that Dr. Erdl and Jack are hearing the needs of the teachers in our buildings. We are set up, like Dr. Erdl said, to meet face-to-face with our members and non-members in our building and communicate in a manner that they feel comfortable. Because that was sometimes something that people didn't feel comfortable. And now I think people are feeling a little bit more comfortable communicating with us. But we try to meet with our members and non-members to share the things that we're talking about. And we thank you.
One of the other pieces, too, I know I met with the executive committee of the WEA last week, two weeks ago. And, I mean, I think it was probably one of the more productive meetings I've been to in a long time. And I think, like I said, there's a difference. And I see it as the way the association is trying to move the district forward and work for the teachers. And I'm not saying that it wasn't done that way in the past, but it's just a marked difference from what I see. And I think it's worthy of note. And ultimately, we want to make sure that people feel comfortable communicating, whether they have concerns, positives, negatives. And that's really what we're trying to build, is some trust in the district and a greater level of trust. So it doesn't have to go... Information doesn't have to filter through, even through a principal or through the WEA or through a superintendent advisory, that if there's something going on, that people feel comfortable and confident in communicating what's going on. So I think ultimately, that's all of our goals and what we're trying to accomplish, so...
And you did attend our last monthly meeting in my beautiful classroom. And we got a lot...
Great memories.
Yes, we got good snacks. We always have snacks. But we got a lot of positive feedback about how they felt that they were very comfortable speaking with you and felt like looking forward to next month when you were coming. And we would like to move forward also. I know you're going to talk about that. So but we're on board with helping with that legis... All that legislative stuff, like big time. So we've got people to share names that are more than willing to help with that, so... Thank you.
I think one other piece, too, was Jack and I, and previous it was Jack's predecessor, going to the buildings twice a year and meeting. Some of the meetings are pretty much the whole staff, some not as many. But I know those meetings are going well because people are very willing to share concerns at pretty much every building, and they feel comfortable doing it. And we're trying to be able to... We're trying our best to respond to some of those concerns as we go around. So I'm hoping that we have our new HR director in place for the second round of those meetings. And certainly for next year, that we'll be going around and continuing with those meetings to try to get input from staff as well, so...
Thank you so much. I am just very grateful to all of... To Dr. Erdl and all of you who are involved in this. Being on the board before Act 10 and after Act 10, you know, that's been the biggest void is how do we communicate? You know, we went from having this bargaining agreement and scheduled times that we would sit down and talk about things to a handbook that was kind of supposed to take the place of that. And, you know, all the time, I think, inching toward where we are now, where, again, the face-to-face and the trust, you know, it takes a long time. That change was very sudden, was very abrupt. People did not have time to, you know, prepare and find alternate ways to communicate. So I am very appreciative of your efforts, Dr. Erdl, and certainly of all of your efforts. So thank you, and thank you for being here tonight as well.
I did attend one of the healthy eating seminars.
You didn't have crepes, I bet.
I was going to say, I don't think the crepes fit in, but it was some good yogurt that we were able to...
With honey.
All right. Is there a board comment? I know we have one more report, but we have our staff people here. Okay, then, did you need to speak for Mrs. Casey, or she's set to go, I believe?
Well, I think the stage has been set by Katie with... But no, legislative advocacy, I think there is some history in... Under the bylaws, it talks about the vice president of the board, the legis... Being the legislative advocate. I can't remember the exact words, but I... And I don't remember how many years ago, when John Ray was the vice president, we did have an advocacy committee that was meeting and doing some work and felt it was a good time right now. I know the communication I received after the information that was sent out from the district about the state budget, I've received more feedback than I ever have before about advocacy, about legislative act... Action, just really about concerns about our schools. And I think right now is a perfect time to get that going. I know Mrs. Casey and I have had a number of conversations, and she's committed to setting the committee, getting it moving, and making some steps to... Taking some steps to educate and advocate. So I'll let her talk more.
It's interesting because I've been kind of trying to think of my journey. And I started as a teacher, and then I was a parent. And then I didn't have kids in schools yet, but I got a phone call from a neighbor and said, "You know what, Kristy? They're trying to close our neighborhood school. And you have three children. You have a long history there, so you need to come help us save this school." And I think that's kind of where my advocacy started. You know, we started going to school board meetings, and we started doing literature drops and talking to community members. And our voices can be very powerful. I have been doing some advocacy work for another organization and had some advocacy training and thinking about, you know, what that means for a school district. I know, like Milwaukee, they are a rather large district, and they have in-house lobbyists that aren't constantly advocating for them. And I don't know, have we ever had a lobbyist? Have we ever hired a lobbyist that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
But you know what? I don't think that we need that because we have super-educated, passionate people who believe in our education system right here in Wauwatosa. And I think we just need to kind of come together as a group. It's super powerful if we learn to speak with one voice, and we have a consistent message that we're giving to the legislators. And I think I've seen some of this advocacy work going on, and it's just amazing because I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, you people have been doing this for a long time, and people have been advocating." And it was like a world that I didn't even know of. And I think, you know, as a teacher, you know, you're working really hard to make effective change and growth in your classroom, and you're focused on that. And as a parent, you're wanting to support that community. And but there are people that I think once made aware of the fact that this work is important and needed, that they will just really kind of jump on board and help accomplish what we need to get done. One thing that I have learned along this process, and it's a quote, it talks about, "This process is complicated." And it says, "The public has the impression that interest groups can find a single member of legislature, and poof, something happens. Policy doesn't work that way. We have a system in place that is designed to move slowly. Many of these organizations are in it for the long haul. It requires a long process of building coalitions of support and looking for the right moment, the right people. Change can happen quite suddenly, but getting to that point requires big efforts to do it." That came from lobbying and policy change. And I think we are excited, and right now, we have a hot topic. And I think once that topic is gone, there are other issues that we need to identify that are much bigger and need more commitment and attention to. And I think we also have to have in place, then in this advocacy group, you know, training. So, you know, when we cycle people out, we cycle new people in, and we kind of keep this momentum going. I think Wauwatosa can really make this a model for other communities. Some of the things that I was thinking about that we would probably need to do is educate. We need to educate ourselves on our policies and issues that we need to be looking at to make our district stronger. We need to educate our parents and our teachers. Teachers have great stories to tell. Parents have great stories to tell, and legislators love stories. They love to tell those stories to, you know, support their position. And then I think also part of my personal mission, being on the school board, is I think that there still is a disconnect between school boards and the greater community. If you don't have kids in the school, it's, I think, harder to stay connected. And I think this is an opportunity for us to engage community members, business people. For a long time, there's always been this sense of urgency, and I think people think, "Yes, yes, we get involved, and we can make things happen." But like that quote said, it doesn't happen overnight, and it's a longer process. But I think it's another way to engage the community as taxpayers. It's important that they stay abreast on issues that are important and where their monies are going. I also think, along with education, and I kind of touched upon that in what I just said, was engaging. We need to engage all members of our community. And then we need to develop a plan of action and how we're going to implement this. One of the things that was new to me was, you know, a lot of people say write letters or, you know, email your legislatures. And I have found out that that is not as effective as it used to be because it's really easy not to read those emails or to trash them. So ironically, phone calls are a super-important tool to communicating how you feel. And so I have heard from some community members that are super-passionate and very energetic, and I just think it's the right time, and we can really make this an effective group. One model out of Illinois is some schools have trained advocacy parents at each building that help stay abreast and on top of information and can disseminate that to their families at their school and kind of talk to their families and get people, you know, together to go up to Madison to talk to the legislator and tell them, you know, what it is we need. And that's important. The face-to-face is super-important. And legislators take that very seriously because these are their constituents and their votes. And I'm really looking forward to getting together as a group with parents and teachers and community members and hearing their ideas and their visions and then kind of bringing this all together and moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Board members. Mrs. Fee.
Thank you. I agree that a legislative advocacy committee is appropriate and timely. I have a few nuts and bolts questions, and I don't know if this is the time for them because this is a new... You know, this is being introduced to me tonight. So are you ready to answer questions about, you know, timelines and procedures and all that sort of thing? Or is that a conversation we should have at another time?
I don't know if we're that far, but I would welcome your questions at this point because I think that they will help kind of frame some of what we're thinking about doing.
I'll just tell you what my concerns are, and perhaps we can have that conversation another time. But first, obviously, the initial question is, how is this committee going to be formed? Who's going to determine how large it is and who sits on it and things of that nature? I can't recall if... I think that there used to be a procedure. I know John came up with one that was... I know John came up with one that was very complex about making sure all segments of the co, of the city were represented. But anyway, how the committee is going to be formulated would be of interest to me. But more importantly, how is the positions the committee takes going to be determined? My concern is if this is a committee of the board, then I think the board should be involved in determining what the positions are that are being advocated on our behalf. So my question is just, what is your thought process about how that's going to take, who's going to determine what they're advocating for? I guess. And that's probably a bigger conversation that we might want to have right now. But it's something that I would be very interested in hearing about.
I can, go ahead. I would not call, I would not consider it a committee of the board. I'd consider it an ad hoc committee. Dr. Erdl?
It is an ad hoc.
Yeah, it's an ad hoc committee. I'd encourage you to make the membership as broad as you can. You know, people will sign up and then drop off. So, you know, people that are willing to work, but that, that piece will be yours as an ad hoc committee.
I envision that the advocacy agenda items that we advocate for, we would work closely with the district and Dr. Erdl. My participation in SWSA, which is Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance with the 29 school districts, they're, they're pretty cohesive in, in their agenda advocacy and policy. And so I think we would take clues, clues from them. I certainly want this to be all encompassing. I, I hope that we get many different political views on this committee because I think those are, are challenging everybody to kind of stretch and think outside of, of their comfort zones. I would like to see representation from all of the schools in the district. I'm hoping maybe we can get some suggestions. I think sometimes, you know, those leaders kind of just, natural leaders are, are evident and hoping to get some feedback from school principals and leaders as to who we could reach out to. And then I think looking to at, you know, other community groups in the district that that might want, that's, you know, represent other groups that would like to be a part of this group. But I, I appreciate those questions. I think they're, they're good things to be thinking about.
I would also ask that you, when the committee starts its work, that the board be kept very informed, to go back to the communication issue. Because whether it's called an ad hoc committee or a board committee, the assumption, based on the way I get various responses in the past, is that it's, it's the board's committee. And I think that if we're not on that committee and we're not involved in certain, determining the agenda items for advocacy, we need to know exactly what they are because people are going to ask us questions about it or say, why are you taking this position or things of that nature? And if we're not informed, then I can't answer those questions.
I think the main starting point would be off the, the board's resolution. That would be the starting point. And I think if there's any deviation for advocacy from that, that would come back to the board. And I'll make sure that there's communication. I think it's critical that there's communication back and forth with the board on what's going on with that committee, so.
Thank you.
I, I certainly, you know, appreciate that comment too. And we, Mrs. Fee, I'm sorry. I think, you know, as, sometimes in Madison, things kind of pop up, but we can kind of anticipate them. And so I think, you know, if we were taking a group to advocate or to testify, you know, we would have some of those dates in advance. And, you know, of course, letting the board know that, what our intentions are so that you can all speak to it and say, you know, we know of this and this is their messaging. I think, again, speaking with one voice and all saying the same message.
Right.
Mrs. Milfeld?
The frequency, do, what are you thinking about frequency for meetings and, or just as they're needed?
Well, I think right now, we, we kind of need to get underway and see what we can do for this budget cycle and, and getting more money for the public schools. I think, you know, we have a short timeframe in which to work right now because the budget will eventually go to a vote. I don't know, there's speculation. I don't know if it's the end of May, beginning of June, when that will happen. But I think, you know, I'm hearing from people that there is a sense of urgency and we need to try to kind of come together really quick on this issue. But then I hope, once this passes, that we can be more strategic in, in our issues.
Well, what I would suggest then for communication is we just use our normal communication means until we have a more formal committee, you know, communication means by the superintendent's memo and then using the reports here on the superintendent section on a more, you know, on a more formal reported out basis. But that if there are, if there are dates and, and things like that, if they could be linked, you know, to the weekly memo or, you know, somehow communicated more frequently, that would be important.
You know, I, I certainly see my job to help facilitate this, but I will rely on, on the members as to, you know, our direction and, and, you know, hear their voice and, and concerns and opinions. I, you know, and when I'm thinking about this, the grand, bigger picture, I'd like to see, you know, I don't think they're on there, but like our legislative contacts and information on our website that parents can easily, easily access their, their information to call or to email. And having some of these policy agenda items actually on our website and even a place, you know, of call to action. And I think, you know, when you form a group like this, you have to identify people's strengths. Some, you know, people are going to be better at, you know, talking to people. Some people are going to be better, you know, going and speaking in front of a legislature. So I think, you know, we will be smart and strategic about it and communicative.
Just, I need to add something about strategic. To me, the word strategic means slow and methodical. And, and I know that's not what you mean, but I just need to, I need the board to understand that advocacy is not a methodical process in what we're trying to accomplish. There's a need to be quick, nimble, and decisive. That's not how bureaucracies work, but that's where communication with the board is more important. And your point, your point is well taken, that I'll make sure we're communicating quickly in a very timely manner, but this group needs to take action quickly. Advocacy never works when there's not a major issue. Everybody just kind of waits. It's been proven over and over and over that if, when there's an issue to deal with, that's when people rally around it, advocate and become effective. And we just, the, the strategic part of making sure the group is able to, to, I hate to say pounce on an issue, but really to, to gather around and rally around an issue. But if, I just need to point out that it needs to be something that needs to move quickly and not necessarily methodically. Advocacy can be a messy process, but it needs to be quick and aggressive, I guess is the one word I would, I would use. And that's not normally necessarily how we operate, but I think with this group, that's, I think, the, the way it needs to.
I agree with that. Well said.
I, I'm hearing you approach this exactly the way, you know, I would hope you would. There is an urgent need right now for action and education. But I think that will be a great tool then to keep this committee together and move on to more of the long-range things. As far as board responsibility goes, we did unanimously approve that resolution and I think, I believe you should feel free to use that as your guideline for these first steps and certainly keep the board informed. But we've made our statement on it as a board. So, you know, that's, that's your blueprint for now as far as the board's involvement goes. And certainly, I, I think any one of us are willing to help and do more as needed. But I, I really appreciate you stepping up and taking this responsibility. I know that you've got the experience to do it, you've got the communication skills. I'm, I'm very excited about it. And it is going to be a long haul, so a lot of things to talk about and to keep going and to make better. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I am pleased and honored.
Okay.
Ms. Randall, just one other thing on the communication. When I introduced Katie, I did not introduce Kathy Rasner and Patty Chapman. Patty is a teacher at Longfellow and Kathy at West. And they're also members of the WEA who we meet with, so, sorry.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Okay. Was there any community comment on the superintendent reports?
Katie Wilkes. We are, Kristy, we're more than willing and we have long lists of people, including community members.
That's great.
That we already have lined up. We talked about it at our last meeting last week. And we have people going out to the buildings, asking parents, like you said, on both sides of the issue, who are willing to share whatever they can. So as soon as you're ready and able, we've got, we have a legislative committee. Kathy is one of the members on our committee, so, and she's done a lot already. So we're pretty active, so we're ready.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Expect an email from me later this week.
I just wanted to say hi. I'm Kristy, I'm Darnell. My name is Taylor.
Hi, yes.
I have a bunch of mom friends at many of the different.
Would you mind just stating your name and address? Thanks.
Darnell, Acation, 318 North 110th Street. My daughter currently attends Underwood School and I have a daughter that graduated from West four years ago. And I'm really concerned, I like all the initiatives that you're doing right now, reaching out to the Realtors, all the, I was making notes, all the things you're doing to build us up. I'm very concerned as everybody is. If we take another hit like this, I, I don't think we're going to be the place everybody wants to come with their kids to go to school. So you have my name, my contact. I have at least five or six friends that want to join in. We're even talking about some nice ways to get the people that have the Republican view to at least be willing to go to the governor and say there has to be another plan besides just socking Wauwautosa. So I'll be happy to do anything you want and I'll keep talking to all the people that I have that I've already talked to, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
And I'm glad to see, I was under the impression, I'd like to ask a question. I'm not sure how to say this politically correct, but it's okay for the teachers then to be involved with this whole, this whole process? If they're in agreement that the money shouldn't be taken from Wauwautosa? I'm getting mixed feelings, a lot of parents, maybe I should be meeting with you privately, but they're afraid to approach the teachers or even talk about it on the school grounds because we think we're getting somebody in trouble.
It probably shouldn't be discussed during the school day with teachers.
Okay.
That can be problematic, but I'm sure there's a lot of other appropriate times where they can have that discussion.
Okay.
But there is a fine line.
Okay.
Between advocacy during the school day for teachers and for, for me as well, but, yeah, they need to be careful.
So the meetings though, that are taking place, and do I understand you're all teachers? Okay, so it's okay at these meetings, just not on the school grounds?
Yeah, it's, it's important at the meetings that teachers are involved.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to be clear because I have some parents who are really excited and some that are running down the playground in fear. So I want to make sure we get the right people helping. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think it's a good thing that we're forming this committee. And I know in the past, I felt it was effective and it was very good to have communications with our representatives. And I think this is the right time and we have the right subject since we have passed a resolution. Echoing what others have said, I would, going forward though, like to see, have some more discussion about how the board is going to set the priorities for the committee. Because I think, in my view, this committee should operate in a way where the board sets a policy or a position and then the committee figures out how to carry that out or lobby for that position. It would, wouldn't seem appropriate for me for the committee to come up with their own positions to lobby for the district without the board having had the overall input in that. So I don't know how others feel about that, but I think that would be something useful to discuss in the future, once we get past this initial budget period.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, if there's any public comment on any other items that were not on tonight's agenda, please step forward. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into an in-service regarding the school board book study in conference room A. As the in-service is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained at this meeting. May I have a move? Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And I'll just add, let's meet in conference room A in about five minutes. And Mrs. Galante, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you.[1797.88]